All right, we'll start tonight's meeting with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our August 5th, 2021 village board meeting. Can we begin our night's activity with a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from the July 15th, 2021 meeting?
Second.
Second from Andy. Any changes? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Citizens comments. I see we have some, a citizen in the room. Come on up by the camera so he can get a good shot of you and let us know what's going on.
I see you're under new business. Did you want me to wait?
Oh, you're under new business. I'm sorry. We'll wait. I will wait. Okay, we have no other citizens for comments. We'll move on to trustees comments. We'll start with Mr. Dryden.
Just planning to go through the inventory of decorative streetlights and figure out which ones are NIMOS and which ones are villages and get those converted to LED. When I contact National Grid, I intend to ask them how much they want to sell them to us for. There's no reason we should be renting those. Hopefully, we'll figure that out soon. That's all I have.
Bruce Evans.
I want to commend the majority of the residents of the village of Baldsville that after all the winds we had in July during storm debris that had to be put out to be picked up by our crews, the majority of the people placed it at the end of their driveway, between sidewalks in the street. Then there's those few folks that make it a practice of putting this stuff out in the street, forcing traffic to go out and around the pile into oncoming traffic from the other direction. I noticed that Sunset Terrace, Westonitis Street, North Street, Cannon Street, Mildred Ave seem to be the worst in my mind. And these are repetitive. Brush has been picked up this week, first full week of the month. It's already back there, out in the street again. Just wish those few folks would be more considerate of the rest of us that live here. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Thank you, Bruce. Mark?
I'm going to request an executive session to update the board on contract negotiation status. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. That'll be item F. Next up, we got Ruth Seiko.
Just the agenda, thank you.
All right. Megan?
I also would like to request an executive session for a personnel issue matter.
That'll be item G. All right, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll move on to Mr. Shepherd.
I'd like to request to stick to the agenda.
You're just a funny guy. All right. I got a couple of things. We'll get on to that and then on to the rest of the meeting. We did some sealing of some streets. You may have noted, remembered a few, a couple of years ago, I don't know, maybe five. Steve Darkangelo had come up with a different kind of paving, kind of a cold pack, and did it on some streets in Candlewick and on a few other streets around the village. And the plan at the time was to come back and seal them. Because of the, it's not like when you do the normal hot tar that you put down, goes 10, 12 years without too many problems. This, after five or six years, the stones start getting exposed. And so sealed all those up. And talking to our public works superintendent, Chuck, he said that the paving that we did this year and the sealing stuff was by far the most that he had ever seen done in the village. So hats off to Chuck for being aggressive, getting as much done as we could get done. We also got some sidewalks taken care of that were, we were kind of like, we had issues with little pieces of a sidewalk and so on. And Chuck was bold and aggressive and said, "Let's just do them, and if they want to complain, they'll complain." And we, everything has been done, and it worked, and it looks great. And so Chuck's not here tonight, but I want to, hats off to him for leading us into a, the next generation of paving. Let's see. Don't know if any, how many people have noticed or seen on Facebook, but the Red Mill Inn has become the Red Mill Manor. And they have had some tours for people to see the inside of the building and what it looks like. From what I've heard, it's spectacular. Thirty-two people will be moving in to apartments. This is not an assisted living. This is totally independent living for people. They, they have a kitchen. They will provide three meals a day if people want them. But people will come and go as they please. And from what I've heard, that the seniors that they've talked to so far are very excited about the fact that they can walk through almost everywhere in the village to do whatever they want to do, and they're pretty excited about that for a living facility. Got a beautiful deck that you can overlook the river and the dam, see the beautiful sunsets. So you probably start seeing more cars over there as people start moving in. I mean, it's, it's kind of a shame because it was nice to have an inn at that spot in the village for people coming in from out of town, for weddings and graduations and all that kind of stuff. It just didn't work out for the people who had it, and the new people are very excited. If you get a chance, if somebody says, you know, they'll give you a tour, take a chance and see it. Paper Mill Island has been quiet for a long time, but it's kind of, it's supposed to change. Now, we don't know with the recent COVID stuff if some of it's going to have setbacks. But August 11th, 9:30 in the morning will be zumba on the island. Anybody is welcome to go over there and take part. You can go over and watch, sit on the bench and watch people do zumba. They'll have four, four or five instructors. If you want to throw on your tights, your shorts, go over there and workout, doesn't cost you a penny. The 13th of August, Friday nights, the first concert on the island. The 14th is the Rotary event. Seneca River Days with fireworks. Everybody's been clamoring for fireworks. We finally have them. Thank you, Ken Schmidt, for getting us fireworks. Also, I think Honda City is the sponsor, so it was nice that they could find a good sponsor. And then on the 23rd, this isn't Paper Mill Island, but I'm going to steal a little Ruth's thunder. But one of the big, to me, one of the best events of the summer every year is the car show at Canton Woods. If you like old cars and you like to get up close and see what people have done to them, what the insides look like, talk to people who've been driving this car for 40 years and how much money they put into it, great time to go over there. Usually got pretty good food, ice cream. And in the past, some of the best raffles at any event you go to. So looks like August will be a chance for people to start getting a little more social. All that stuff is outdoors, which is a plus. So there you go. Hopefully, can take advantage, at least see a couple of those things and shake off some of the rust for some of us. And I think that's a... I know that we've taken more trees down. At the last time I heard, Chuck said we had taken down about 70 ash trees. And we're working now to find a contractor to help us get some of the real big ones down. And then we do have a grant in place to help us buy new trees to replace some of the old trees. So, big changes. Kind of sad the way the ash trees have bit the dust. But if you remember, when I first moved to Baldwensville in 58, following summer, can remember being right out in front of the police station out here and looking up Genesee Street, and the whole street had a canopy. And probably by about 1980, all those trees were gone. A lot of elm trees that got Dutch elm disease, maple trees that just had outgrown their existence. They were old and falling apart. And suddenly, all the big trees came down and the street had nothing. Now, if you look up again, it's starting to get a canopy again. So that's where we stand with trees. And hopefully, we can get the new ones in soon, particularly in developments, you know, like on Chaucer, in Baldwin Hill, places like that where a lot of the smaller street trees, where ash trees, like to see them replaced as quick as we can. Okay, we'll move on to department heads. Swing this around. We'll start with our attorney, Mr. Baldwin.
I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Coat officer, Greg.
At the last meeting, Mr. Dryden had asked me to check into what appears to be an abandoned Time Warner Cable structure that's on the ground near Edgewood. And I met with the, one of their techs at the site. They were a little confused is what I was calling them about, but once we got to the site and he saw the box, he contacted another department to let them know. And it appears that the box is abandoned, and they're going to send that to their construction department to remove the structure. Right now, it's got a lot of, you know, kind of trees growing up into it. Doesn't look like they were planning to, you know, to take that out of there anytime soon. So hopefully, that'll be gone before too long. To what Bruce mentioned about the brush in the road, our code does require that you leave the brush at the curb. You're not allowed to put any kind of debris or waste into the roadways. So I'll be looking into that. And also with the, a few weeks ago, county executive Ryan McMahon met at the Sports Bowl and outlined a new facade grant program that the county is issuing. And to date, we've got 25 local businesses that have applied to be a part of that grant program for facade improvements throughout the village center. So I just wanted to update the board on those numbers.
Good. Thank you, Greg. Next, village clerk, Mo.
If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but otherwise, we're just doing what we do in the office. But I do want to remind everyone, the building is locked, is, but if you ring the bell and tell us what you need, we certainly will let you in and point you in the right direction.
Very good. Thanks, Mo. Move on to our treasurer, Hannah.
Yes, everyone should have the most recent final copy of the budget for 2021. I hope everyone's looked it over. I've received no comments or anything from anyone. I have talked to each department head and reviewed a couple of items that I was concerned with to make sure that I have them correct, and I believe department heads and I are all on the same page. As far as I know, everyone seems to be in agreement with my figures. And then I also have put out the budget adjustments, much less budget adjustments than we've had in the past. And there again, I hope everyone has had a chance to kind of take a look. And if you have any questions, please let me know, and other than that, I'll stick to the agenda while we get to that item.
Okay, you've been busy, um, lady.
Yep. I don't know about the young part.
Oh, you don't feel it? All right, we move on to the senior center, Ruth.
I just want the seniors to know that at the present time, we are requiring masks for vaccinated and unvaccinated persons. So if you plan to visit the senior center, please be prepared to wear a mask. We have plenty of them. If you don't have them, we'll be happy to provide that for you. This month, the things that are going on, there's a concert coming up on August 19th. That's a piano concert by John Vona that will be indoors, so be prepared for that. Also, the mayor mentioned our car show, which is happening on August 23rd. It's an evening event, and this year, the canal side is providing the food, and George Leo will be there for live music, so it should be a special evening. And if it does rain, which I hope it doesn't, it will be the following Monday on August 30th. And then at this time, the county did announce that they were bringing the grab-and-go meal inside to start the congregate meal program again on August 23rd. There was a meeting of the nutrition people at the county, so if there's any change, we'll let folks know, but right now, the information we've been given is that the congregate meal will resume inside on August 23rd. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Thanks, Ruth.
Yep.
Move on to the police department, Chief.
Nothing specific, Mayor, unless there's questions by yourself for the board.
Just, just so you know, the other night, my wife and I were talking about you because a notification came over on her phone from the Ring people that there were several neighborhoods that young people were running from car to car, trying to get into and alerting people to make sure your cars were locked. And I said, "Well, everybody in Baldwensville knows that, that they should have them locked. We've been told by our police chief enough times." So hopefully, it wasn't anywhere in the village, or at least they weren't getting in any cars.
Well, I know that that was up in Kimbrook because earlier this week, I walked into the workout facility I go to at 6 o'clock in the morning, and the person at the front desk said, "Just Mike, you're just the person I wanted to see. My car got broken into last night." And I said, "Was it locked?" She said, "No, but my husband's was, and they didn't go on that one." And I said, "What's that tell you?" And so, so yes, I, as we've, the mayor and I have countlessly mentioned, if people could lock their car doors, that would help us greatly in eliminating crime. And I mean that sincerely. That's something that our residents can truly do to help us eliminate crime. Because for the most part, unless someone sees a purse or a computer or something valuable in plain view, especially in the summertime, they're not going to smash the window because people's windows are open. It's going to create, draw too much attention to them, and they're looking for easy targets that doors are open, hoping maybe somebody left keys in it or something valuable that they could steal. And this has been something, you know, unfortunate in my whole career. And it just seems over in the last 10 to 15 years, Mayor, and really the last five, it's become much more prominent. And there might be a lot of reasons for that that we don't have time to go into now, but the opioid pandemic being one of them. But as we look at that, if people could just simply lock their doors, be a great, a great assistance to the police department.
Mark, I have a request. Could you, next week after Chuck was back in town, trying to get together with him on the crosswalk at the end of Brown Street? That sign went in, I remember an eight-year-old girl giving a presentation to it. That sign went in for the first time in 30 years that I've lived, of the people actually stopped for it. They actually saw the sign, and they adhered to state law. People coming off Brown Street with an inability apparently to make an appropriate left-hand turn. I watched two vehicles run it down, cleaned it out until eventually it was on the side of the road, and Chuck's crew picked it up first thing this week, beginning of this week. But I think we need to get it back out there. It's been up to the shop that repaired it. But maybe you could work with him on placement?
Sure, yeah.
Something like that.
And I briefed trustee Shepherd and Seiko. I had reached back out to the state DOT rep following that presentation because I had seen the crosswalk signs over at Town and Manliness and asked the rep what the status of that was. And she said that they hadn't reviewed it, and she would get back to me when they did. There was no timeline. It was established. I forwarded them the email. I don't have anything further to report. When I do, I will. It's something now that I'll, you know, continue to stay on top of. But unfortunately, I don't have anything further, and I don't know when the state might, might, might have something for us. I'll probably talk to the mayor more specifically about that. Maybe he can talk to some other elected officials like himself to see if they might have some influence there. But, you know, I would certainly, you know, like that type of system installed there because I think that would be perfect for, for that location. I really do. And there's two others in the village that would greatly benefit from, from that on state routes that we've talked about. So, but I'll gladly get with Chuck and see if we can.
You know, limited visibility with.
Oh, no, it's, it's, it's definitely in need of some upgrades, and there's no doubt about it. Unfortunately, the state controls it, but we can put something like that in the roadway, and maybe we just need to put it somewhere different.
How, how hard would it be to tell people coming out from Brown to Oswego that they can't take a left-hand turn?
It wouldn't be easy. I mean, I mean, we can put a sign up, but I guess the question then becomes, Mayor, what's the purpose of the no-left turn? Is it so we don't run over the crosswalk sign that we put in the middle of the road? That, I don't think, I think if we look at that intersection anecdotally, we don't have accidents there. We don't have traffic crashes. So for us to put a no-turn sign there off of Brown, number one, it's turning onto a state route. I'd have to even look at DOT reps to see if they have some control over that. But let me, let me get with Chuck first to see if we can't put, because, because it's not a safety issue as far as pedestrians, because they're going to see pedestrians in that crosswalk whether they're turning right or left. So if it's just an issue of people can't make that left turn without running over our center of the road crosswalk sign, well, maybe we just move it up a little bit to the south or to the north, or we put two of them there, one a little bit on each side of that crosswalk, and maybe that helps solve the problem a little bit. So we'll see.
Okay.
But I'm glad to talk to Chuck on it. We'll write it down.
Somebody hit a ding, or? We'll skip that pending business because that's part of the discussion for our, the executive session. And move on to new business. Item A, can I get a motion to approve the waiver of the open container law for the Ghost Walk event at Baldwin Canal Square Thursday, October 7th, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.? Is that what you're here to discuss?
Yeah, it's part of it, yes.
Okay, come on up.
Stand over here a second. I should see everybody.
I can't find you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Pam Milatch, and I'm here on Jim Dale's behalf, representing the Baldwensville Center of the Arts. And I am just here asking everybody's support in our coming up event, October the 7th, for the full weekend for Ghost Walk, which brings in about 600 people daily to the Ghost Walk tours and about $13,000 worth of business to the village for the weekend. Part of that works, we would like to expand the event this year to a Thursday night event for Ghouls Night Out, which is a ladies' night under the tent at the Baldwin Square to kick off our event, and then do Ghost Walk tours on Friday and Saturday nights as well.
The open container request is just for that?
Correct.
And that at Baldwin Square?
Correct, yes.
Not the whole Ghost Walk?
No, no, no. That would, that would add a whole different layer of ghost details to be told 20 years from now.
I can see the police chief getting very anxious.
I know. I can't even make eye contact with them right now, though. No, that's just for the Thursday night event, the Ghouls Night Out.
Any issues with that, chief?
None whatsoever, ma'am.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any Ghost Walk, ghost stories of Beeville they would like to share with me at another time?
I would like to change the night of the worming.
The Ghouls Night Out is going to be a really good time. So can I tell you about Ghouls Night Out? You guys want to know? Okay. So Ghouls Night Out is going to be that Thursday night, and we are going to, we're in the works right now of having area restaurants sponsor part of a flight of beverages. So it'll be goosely, Halloween, ghost-themed cocktails. And then, like they did with the chili cook-off, we're going to vote on which had the best beverages. So right now, up one line is Brick and Barrel, Angry Garlic, Sal's, and Delia, Pizza Man, and possibly to Stones. And then with your admission ticket, you will get a small flight of beverages. And then on top of that, we're going to have two spiritual mediums coming around, delivering messages. So that brings the ghost thing kind of together. And then if you're interested and you want to dig a little deeper into the ghost thing, you can sign up and have a tarot card reading. But it's mostly an event to bring the community together, and who doesn't love a good girls' night out? So we thought that would be a great way to kick off our whole festive weekend of Ghost Walk. And Ghost Walk, the stories are bigger and better this year, so new stories on the horizon for the Ghost Walk tours.
Sounds like fun.
It'll be a good time. I'm looking forward to it.
Does anybody have any other questions for Pam? Can I get a motion?
I will. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. I have B. You have more on this agenda than you're here for?
No, no.
Okay.
Just the whole telling you guys about Ghost Walk and...
I didn't want to chase you off before.
No, no, don't chase me out. It's going to be Baldwensville.
Dick, would you mind signing the waiver? And then, did you want to get that up tonight, or do you want me to just call you in the morning?
Whatever you need for you guys tonight. I'm good with anything.
Sign it right now?
Yeah.
Thought it was interesting. He only threw ghouls on the board. Make a motion in second.
I like that. That's pretty funny.
I know, I said too.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
All right, so now, move on to, I have B on the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the waiver of the open container law for the creative concerts Paper Mill Island event Friday, August 13th, 2021, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m.? 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.?
Second.
Any questions? That'll be our first night back on the island with a concert. That'll be good to see. All right, we have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item C, motion, can I get a motion to accept the rate modification of the village own-up carpet bid that had previously been awarded to Sissado Floor Covering Companies in the amount of $6,895 at the March 5th, 2020 village board meeting due to the pandemic? The new quote is $7,295.
Mayor, before you do that, as a matter of discussion, I just would like to point out to the board that I did discuss with the village board that reviewing the bids that came in on the original bidding, that the bids are all in excess, the other bids are all in excess of the new quote. So that, in fact, the approval, if the board does approve the new quote tonight because of the change in circumstances, that will not be to the detriment of any of the other bidders.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. Good to know. And just for everybody's knowledge, this is part of a bond agreement that we had done over a year ago. And part of it was for new carpeting for the village clerk's office. So that's how that's being paid for. It is a budgeted item in that sense. So can I have a motion?
I'm just curious, why due to the pandemic? Is it just the cost of materials have gone up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Good question. I mean, that's what's happening to everybody, but... So can I get a motion? Bruce, second? Shep? Any more discussion?
Can one of them come in?
Part.
You have any scheduled process?
No, I'm actually going to just have him and Chuck and not be able to between the two. Our DPW has to move the...
Has to remove everything, so.
Yeah, so it's...
That'd be a lot of fun.
It's their call, yeah. So I really want to do it around their schedule.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item D, get a motion authorizing the village to secure the fireworks display insurance for the Rotary's August 14th event, as in the past, Rotary will reimburse the village the cost of the insurance. the cost of the insurance.
Move.
Wait, excuse me, do you have a new agenda up there?
Yeah, mine is slightly different.
Yeah. I thought I had replaced it. We actually, the village will need to sign the firework agreement with the fireworks...
Oh, the difference is the companies listed?
In order for us to get the insurance.
Okay, the, so the motion would be authorizing the mayor to sign the fireworks display agreement with Pyrotechnico for the Rotary Seneca River Day event Saturday, August 14th. As in the past, the village will secure the fireworks display insurance, and Rotary will reimburse the cost to the village.
And this is it? This is how it has been done in the last few years?
Okay.
I'll move that, my other motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Mo, would you let the Rotary treasurer know how much the bill is when you get it? Thank you.
Item E, can I get a motion to approve the 2020-2021 budget transfers per the treasurer's attached financial reports? So you should all have a little packet, about three pages of transfer items to get everything back to level, even out accounts, and if you want...
Move.
Got Andy with a motion to...
Second.
Discussion?
Just in reviewing the line items, some of these are very straightforward. I just, I guess I would just ask the chief on the police equipment line item, there's 37,000 moved over, what did we buy?
So what happened there is we had a police vehicle that was struck by another vehicle, and it was pulled out.
Okay.
So we had to replace that vehicle. So when we replaced it out of the equipment line, but then what happened is when we got the insurance money, the insurance money does not go back into that equipment line, it has to go into a revenue line. So that's why that line showed such a large deficit. That's what happened.
We have an insurance recovery line, A2680, and revenues, and that covers that.
All right. But that's the only question I have, there was one on social security that was transferred over disability, and I, we did not need the social security to make that payment?
Well, we didn't have enough in the disability insurance to, I didn't estimate it properly when we did our budget, so we were short, and social security was over.
Okay.
So...
So that answers that question.
Hopefully this year we'll have it right, yeah.
That's all, that's all I have.
Hannah?
Well, thank you for that.
I assume this means a street lighting one? We underestimated, we underbudgeted by $10,000?
Yes.
We need to make a note come November. We need to make a note come November.
There was an instant work done or something, I should have brought that ledger. Chuck was totally aware of it, and Louise, and I think the mayor, because he said, I think that's the one that he said Dick is aware of this, but we would...
I know several...
Have the funds. Have the funds, but I'm not sure what it's for. I could pull the ledger and see if I can get any more details out of that.
Yeah, we, we went to some of the different lighting for the streetlights and saved ourselves about 20,000 years, so maybe we're not saving...
We had the budget.
Starting to increase in the rates, caught up with us.
Yeah, surprise, surprise. Any other questions?
I did talk to Chuck and Louise both about that to make sure I was okay with that figure, They did book it out, saying that that was right.
Do we have a motion in seconds?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions for Hannah, or anybody else? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. So that's the last item of business on the agenda. Anything else we need to discuss before we go into executive session? Then can I get a motion to move into executive session for one session for an update and contract talks, and the other for personnel matter?
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. We will see everybody else in two weeks. Thank you.